That can be a really nasty industry.
Good evening and Happy New Year. We'll call the Tuesday, January 15, 2019, meeting of the Everett Planning Commission, beginning with the roll call, please.
Chair Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Labra.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
And welcome to our newest commissioner, Michael Finch.
Thank you.
First item this evening is approval of the December 18, 2018 minutes. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, any comments or corrections or motions? I have just one minor thing, Kathy, on page three at the bottom under item five, Planning Commission bylaws. And the second sentence is just, I'll start with it. Sentence before the amendment needed modified, so he, so just needed modification, or you know, just, that's very minor.
Okay.
Any others?
I'd move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Commissioner McGinn. Commissioner Yanisak.
Yes.
Commissioner Labra.
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Epstein.
Chair Holland.
Yes. Any committee reports from the planning commissioners this evening? Seeing nothing to report, how about staff comments?
Just a couple. One is, obviously, Commissioner Yanisak and Commissioner Zalinski were reappointed by the mayor last week, so congratulations, they get another six-year sentence, I mean term, on the commission. So, we're happy to have them back and welcome Commissioner Finch as our alternate. I think that's it as far as any, well, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna just start with just looking at our agenda here, a little bit of a theme that I want you to get used to. You know, we've got items one, two, and three on the agenda that are briefings tonight. And in large part, the, all three of these are not intended to be major substantive revisions to either the shoreline master program, or critical areas, or the sign code. In case, in the case of the shoreline master program, and I'll let Karen get into that when it's, when she gets up to brief you more, but it's a state mandate just to have us get in line with all the changes that have been made under state law with respect to shorelines since we last updated our plan in 2005. And with the critical areas, we're looking to do some simplification. Right now, we have two different sets of shore, excuse me, critical area regulations. We want to get those into one system. That's part of what Dave will be briefing you on. And sign code, we've got, there's been a major state or US Supreme Court decision that has required cities all across the country to look at some revisions to their sign codes. And so, that's part of our reason for bringing that forward. But we're also looking kind of heels of the metro process, where we kind of took a theme on streamlining things, where we took 12 different zones in the metro area and consolidated those down into three new zones. And that kind of set the template for some code simplification that we're going to be working on in the next couple of years here. But that's something that we found is just with the age of some of our codes, and we really need to try to make things a little bit simpler and more streamlined, yet maintain the protections that we need for the environment, for our neighborhoods, and aesthetics and design standards that we've put into our codes over the years. So with that, kind of a long-winded introduction to, I guess, the next items on the agenda. So, any questions for me?
No, right now, thank you.
Okay. Well, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the Planning Commission on anything that's not on the agenda this evening. If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we will turn it over to Ms. Stewart for the critical areas, oh, shoreline master program briefing.
All right. Thank you. First of all, I would like to acknowledge a number of our shoreline advisory committee members are here in the audience tonight, and I'd like to thank them for coming. This is a continuation of a briefing that we started back in November of last year on the draft document that was prepared with help from the shoreline advisory committee. And as Alan was sort of putting bookends a little bit on the scope of this update, the periodic review is required by the state for these shoreline master programs. And right now, Everett is one of 72 jurisdictions in the state that is in this first round of grant contracts to do, to do this update. The review is intended to keep our SMPs current with amendments to state laws and rules, as well as changes to our local plans, like our comprehensive plans and other regulations, as well as changes to address local circumstances and any new information that we might have or improved data. The scope of this update is really established in the grant contract that we have with the state that was approved last year by the city council. And so, we've been working on this for about a year now, and are on track to meeting our deadline, which is the end of June of this year. The periodic, periodic review work elements, just a quick overview of that, we focused on four key areas. First of all, assessing any changes to our shoreline jurisdiction, and there were a couple of instances where we needed to revise the jurisdiction. Secondly, then, based on the different jurisdiction boundaries, assessing our shoreline environment designations, which are somewhat analogous to zoning, but within shoreline jurisdiction. And we worked to make our maps more user-friendly by having a grid of indexes in the front, so then you can more easily find the particular section that you're looking for, as well as simplifying the information that was provided on the maps to focus on the shoreline environment designations themselves. And we made a few corrections to the maps because of the jurisdictional changes. And then the third focus of this update was with the new comprehensive plan back in 2015, there were some changes that then needed to be pulled into the shoreline master program. So specifically, there's a new element, the marine port element. And so, those policies needed to be reflected in the shoreline program. There is also an element in the comp plan called climate change and sustainability. And so, the policies in there that relate to sea level rise, we've repeated, we've included those in the shoreline master program. There are some harbor front and river front policies from the comprehensive plan that are in the urban design and historic preservation element, because those relate to shoreline juris, shoreline area, we have pulled that into the shoreline master program. And then also referencing some new plans, such as Parks Recreation Open Space Plan that was updated, I believe, in 2017. So that's referenced now. And the 2013 Central Waterfront Redevelopment Plan. And then the fourth area that we focused on with our review was the regulatory consistency. And tonight's meeting is really going to focus on that regarding our critical areas. The draft that we were looking at in November was referencing a 2015 version of Chapter 33, which are our critical area regulations. And you'll hear tonight that we are now in 2019, working on a more updated version of that. And so, we are hoping to have one, one code that applies citywide, so also would apply in the shoreline areas. So you'll notice in the draft that you were sent, I believe, a cleaned-up copy of, the January 2, 2019, paper document, I believe you've been sent that, is that correct? And then it's also, for those who prefer to look at it online, I know some of you do, it's also posted there. And we have it with the underlined and strikeout version, as well as what I'm calling a cleaned-up copy, so that it's easier to read without all the underline and strikeouts to look through. And looking at that document, you'll notice that there's a couple of yellow highlights in the appendices up at the front and the table of contents. And then on page 24, which is the user's guide, what we're doing, those are kind of placeholders to see if this will work with this new critical area regulation that we're hoping to have in our shoreline master program. So those are a couple of things we'll fill in later. And regarding the point we're at in the review, is we have been working closely with several different groups of people since we last talked with you in November. One group would be state wetland and other critical area types of specialists at Department of Ecology, as well as David Pater from Department of Ecology, who is the project reviewer for our program. And he's conducted a number of reviews, and the most recent comment that I got from him just had, was just very recently, five days ago, he sent me an email asking for one more change that's not reflected in the January 2 draft, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So it's related to single-family piers and docks, and this is a regulation that we currently have. It really just applies to Silver Lake, so docks on Silver Lake. Right now, our regulation talks about for new piers or docks, they should not be any larger than six feet in width. And the state is asking us to modify that and not allow any new piers or docks to exceed four feet. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And the other change you may notice with the document is, if you look at the red-lined copy of the January 2 draft that's online, and you're looking at figures 13 and 14, some of the graphics did not come through on those. So in the cleaned-up version of the January 2 draft, and the one you have a paper copy of, figures 13 and 14 have been correctly displayed. So 13 is entitled North Smith Island and North Spencer Island, and figure 14 is called South Smith and Ferry Baker Islands. And those are all the changes that have occurred to the document since we last, we're looking at it at the end of November. A couple of questions have come up regarding our sort of next steps with the document. So tonight is an opportunity for you to discuss the document, ask me any questions, ask, we've got some advisory committee members here, if you'd like to talk with them. And then your next opportunity to discuss this as a planning commission will be at a joint public hearing that you'll be hosting, but Department of Ecology will also be here. And it's a new process to try to sort of streamline their review. As I said, they've got 72 of these they're working on now. So they're trying to combine the review process with a local process. And so, we've sent out postcards advertising the February 5 joint public hearing. And then after February 5, then the, oh, the comment period actually started today. So we have a state-mandated 30-day comment period, and so we've noticed this in the newspaper. And so it will, it will go from January 15 to February 13. And then staff will come back and report to you on February 19 about the comments that we've received. And depending on how many we receive, we'll have a matrix and we'll let you know how we would be responding to those comments. And ideally, we'll be able to have that all pulled together for you on February 19, so you can see what the comments are and what staff's response is to those comments. And then, then we'll have a month before we'll be back before you on March 19 with a revised draft, or whatever kind of direction you're giving us, February 19. And then you could take action on March 19 regarding the periodic update, update to the shoreline master program. Now, another document that we've been using the update process for, and staff briefed you on at the last meeting in December 18, is the Shoreline Public Access Plan. That is technically not part of the shoreline master program, meaning it doesn't have to go through this joint hearing process and be approved by Department of Ecology. However, it's very important that it be locally adopted, because it is a plan that we use for future developments proposed in shoreline areas that are required to do public access. We try to follow projects in the plan. So we currently have our 2003 document that is adopted, but we're wanting to update that in this year, 2019. So we will be bringing that document to you for your adoption, for a public hearing, and then your approval, probably April 16, or maybe we'll have to wait till May. It kind of depends how many comments we're getting and how involved the review is of the SMP. But that is a document that we'll be following shortly after the SMP has gone through, through your review. And were there any other questions that the commissioners had about the process?
Thanks, Karen. Great work. Any questions, Karen, on the document or upcoming schedule?
Or a gentleman from DOE that was here last meeting, did I understand that, are we, are we adopting the latest guidance rating system from DOE in this process?
So I believe you're starting to talk about wetland rating.
Yeah.
So you're gonna hear more about this with our next presentation.
Okay.
So that relates to our critical areas regulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. And you're reminding me, though, one additional stakeholder that we have been talking with on the, the draft regulations for shorelines, as well as critical areas, are, is a representative of some property owners up on Smith Island, and trying to beta-test some of the potential changes to make sure that, that there's still reasonable use of the property, and that the shoreline variance process would, would use the reasonable use provisions. So we have worked through some of those issues, I believe, with that stakeholder group. Did want to mention that.
Karen, was there justification from Ecology related to the six-to-four-foot docks?
Just that that's their best available science, and because these are single-family docks, in general, they would prefer that we don't permit single-family docks, that we encourage neighbors to have a community dock. And the whole idea is to have less overwater coverage for habitat. So in the case of Silver Lake, I doubt there would be that many new docks that would be built, but the idea is to have it more of a narrow feature covering the water. So for a single-family home, a four-foot dock, there were some other dimensions, but that was the one they were trying to have a little smaller.
What about those folks that have existing docks? Are they allowed to replace like-for-like?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do discuss that in the document, and I can pull that up.
That's, that's okay.
But yes, we do.
You spoke about Silver Lake, but we got Rigs Lake and Beverly Lake, and why are we just talking Silver?
Good question. So you might recollect that the, the shoreline jurisdiction doesn't apply to every water body in the city. So Beverly Lake is a good example. It's zoned aquatic, but it's not within shoreline jurisdiction because it's too small. So the two lakes that are within shoreline jurisdiction, Silver Lake and Lake Chaplin. So you have to have 20 acres of open water, and I think Beverly Lake is maybe, what, 11 acres, or something like that?
Thank you.
I had a question.
Commissioner Labra.
So I'm curious on the, the grid index.
Yes.
Are these grids 5A, 6A, 7A, are those going to be additional, or are they replacing the other?
They would be, they're proposed to replace the other. So in the case of 5, that's the existing designations. And then 5A is proposed, proposed to replace, to be the alternate. So it would be the new 5, if you will.
Right. Okay. That's what I wondered.
Yeah, and there's a number, maybe four of the grid maps that we're proposing some changes to. And if any of them you'd like me to go through, I think I've reviewed some of these in past meetings, but I'd be happy to speak to what the changes are, if you've got questions.
Maybe, for an example, maybe 6 and 6A, just explain, it looks like that there's a crosshatching added.
Yes.
Kind of just explain what the thinking is on that.
Okay. So there is something in the Washington Administrative Code that says in our shoreline master programs, if we have information about, in particular, some environmental feature of, of property within shoreline jurisdiction, we should include that information in the shoreline master program. And as you may know, there's legacy pollutants in the soils from the former Everett smelter. And so, the cleanup area is shown in grid 6A map, is just, and there is some reference in the document of the significance of that. So that's just information, so if somebody was interested in the property in that area, they would know that they need to follow up and learn a little bit more about that feature of that area. So it's just in the interest of sharing information.
Okay. One more, I guess, 7 and 7A. So that looks like it's property boundaries that are added. Is that what?
There's more going on with the, with, yes, that's true. I do see the parcel lines are showing up on one and not the other, but they're, the significance of 7A for shoreline jurisdiction, you'll notice the aquatic conservancy, the darker blue, that there's a more extensive area there. And that's from the CWP analysis, its assessment unit 3.05, was supposed to all be included as aquatic conservancy, which has a little more protection because of, there's eelgrass beds, it's a shallower habitat feature. And so, that's the major change within that grid. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Karen?
I had a question. First, I've not read a lot of these, but this looks very thorough and complete. In talking about Silver Lake on page 15, there's a reference to a 1986, '87 study by the University of Washington. Is there any need to update that study, or does the discussion on the following page regarding monitoring sufficiently address that?
That's a great point, and it's something, I know my supervisor, when he reviewed the initial draft, was commenting on these, this early section, is referencing quite dated documents, as well as our inventory goes back to 1997. So that's part of the nature of this update, is that we were not given funding and time to do a new inventory and come up with new studies. So we did not find an updated study for Silver Lake, so that's why this, this one is still referenced.
Okay, great. And then one additional question. In identifying objectives under the various elements, are those objectives prioritized?
No.
Okay.
So they would appear just in any order. So there's no prioritization with the numbering in the document.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Any additional questions? Was there anyone in the audience that wanted to address the Planning Commission on this topic this evening? I didn't see anybody with the signup sheet. Seeing none. Well, thank you, Karen. Great work.
Thank you.
I guess that'll take us to item two, which is critical areas briefing. Mr. Tyler?
Good evening. David Tyler, excuse me, David Tyler, Planning Staff. Yes, I'm here to talk about an update to the city's critical areas ordinance. That would be chapter 1937 of Everett Municipal Code. And as Alan and Karen mentioned, what we're trying to do is, a primary goal here is to combine two different, entirely different sets of critical area regulations into one. So you've got one that applies to shoreline areas, which was required through a settlement agreement a number of years ago, and then another one that applies to the rest of the city, and that would be chapter 37 of the zoning code. We also need to update our best available science and wetland buffers consistent with the latest guidance from Department of Ecology. I think there was a question earlier about what that is, and I was just doing a quick scan of the ordinance, and it looks like it was a 2014 DOE rating system as updated. And they put out various updates over the years to modify that. So that's, that's cited. That methodology will apply in shoreline areas, which it probably is not directly referenced at this point, so that'll be a change. We went backwards here. And then we also want to streamline, simplify the code where possible. Obviously, you know, critical areas can be somewhat complicated and highly technical, and so we can't necessarily simplify wetland buffers, but we can do some things to the way our code is organized and the way, and make it more user-friendly, essentially, and so I'll talk about a couple of those changes. So quick history, so our first critical areas ordinance was an interim ordinance done 1990, and that was just as growth management was being conceived at the state level. And so, we knew something was out there brewing that would require us, assuming it got adopted, to develop a critical area ordinance or regulations. And so then in, after passage of GMA, we then finalized and updated our regulations in 1991. I mentioned the settlement agreement previously, I think that was an appeal of the, yeah, the shoreline management or shoreline master program. And so what was settled upon was that we would use the 1991 critical areas ordinance as a basis for the regulations in shoreline areas. And of course, that was, that ended up being somewhat of a static set of regulations because of the settlement agreement. We weren't able to go in and update those regularly. In fact, I think the wetland buffers that are in the shoreline critical area regulations are, are still in effect. So they're essentially about half of what they are in, in the rest of the city. So that would change under the proposed update. And then in 2006, there was a major update to the city's critical area regulations, the rating systems changed, all the buffers changed. So that was really a redo of the standards. And then a relatively minor And then a relatively minor update in 2015, and that's our current version of the code. So as far as involving other agencies, obviously DOE is key. We had a good meeting with them Monday of last week, where we sat down with their wetlands expert, as well as their shorelines expert, that was Doug Gresham and David Pater, and just kind of walked through what the major changes were and how we're going to basically integrate shoreline and the rest of critical area regulations. So DOE has followed up with written comments, so we're going to take those and incorporate those into our next draft. You will see those at the next meeting. We've also circulated to Port of Everett, as well as other affected property owners, particularly property owners or their representatives in Smith Island. And that would be, of course, mainly shoreline jurisdiction, and so they would see some changes to the critical area regulations. I went backwards again. Sorry about that. Okay, to get to the basic changes, as I mentioned, we want to basically have one set of critical area regulations for the whole city. Update the wetland buffers and mitigation. Here is the table that we've incorporated. This is based on the July 2018 DOE guidance on wetland buffers. And so what this does is makes a distinction based on the type of wetland, the category, and the habitat score. So habitat score is key in determining what those buffer widths are. And that's the case with the current standards. This is a minor adjustment. I think, for example, the one at the bottom there, category four, wetlands have a flat 40-foot buffer. I think the existing standard is 35, but then you can reduce it slightly. So not a huge change there. But we've also changed the format that we're putting some of our information into. For some reason, this keeps jumping around. Okay, back to the sheet. And then we also need to incorporate some of the planning director administrative interpretations that have been issued over the years, the main ones being 2001 and 2011. And those dealt with standards that were implemented as a result of endangered species listings. For example, Chinook salmon, bull trout, and then other species of salmon that are food supply for southern resident killer whales. So we also need to, after many updates to the standards, do some reorganizing and consolidating of the standards. We can shorten the code and make it just as effective and more user-friendly. An example of where we're doing that is the report section. Right now, the various report requirements for, you know, wetlands, streams, geotechnical areas, they're scattered throughout the code, and so we just tried to pull those out, put them into one place, and then sort of give a little bit of information about, you know, when those reports are required, what's the distinction between them. So hopefully, that's a little bit more of a user-friendly format. One other change we're considering, and we did have some discussion with Ecology on this one, is allowing for minor structures, mainly accessory-type structures in wetland buffers, where there had been, you know, they've been legally converted to lawn or yard or cleared, in other words. And there are many cases, particularly in portions of the city that have been annexed over the years, where property was brought into the city, had no, or the, you know, portion that should have been buffer was cleared yard. So we're talking about allowing for up to 120 square feet. I think there might be something different in your draft, which is possibly 200 square feet, but we're evaluating that. Certainly, we wouldn't want to see, for example, a garage where you're going to have a driveway and paving in that buffer, but just maybe something like a tool shed, garden shed, something along those lines. And that's kind of a regular issue that we deal with, with property owners. And to have something like that would help, sort of, help us meet some of those property owners halfway, rather than telling them to get all those structures out of the buffer. So just something we're considering. Gotten some, you know, supportive input from Ecology on that. And then in general, again, as Alan mentioned, we're really not intending to make substantive changes. There's only so much you can do with critical area standards, because much of it's mandated. So we're not going to go through and rewrite the standards, just maybe allow a little flexibility here and there, improve the organization and usability of the code. I apologize for the markup version that I provided to the commission, because we've moved so many things around that it's hard to follow. So a lot of it's going to look like new information, but it's really being moved from one section of the code to another. So I did provide a clean version, so hopefully you were able to sort of figure out what the changes were from that. So next steps, we'll be continuing to meet with stakeholders, including agencies and various property owners, environmental groups. And then beyond that, we just issued a CEPA determination and starting the comment period on that, so some of you may see a notice that went out on that. Next step would be a public hearing on the critical areas ordinance, and I think there's one on the shoreline master program, but if that's not the same date, I don't believe, I think we're going to have the CAO on the 5th of February, with final action on the 19th of March.
Same date. Same? It's the same date.
So that's all I have. Open to questions. Steve Inglesby here is also here, since he's got incredible knowledge and understanding of the code. He's been implementing it for close to 30 years? 25, 30 years?
Dave, one question I have is, you had mentioned the allowance for some structures within what you call the should-have-been buffer areas. I'm sure there's lots in the city that are adjacent to critical areas that have maintained, you know, particular lot dimensions and maintained yards and other things like that. We're not talking about regulating those lots with additional critical areas buffers that are, like I said, a historical subdivision of some kind that was subdivided way back when, but doesn't have any critical areas buffer, but may be impacted by current buffers. Those aren't the lots we're talking about, correct?
No, no. We're talking about the, like you said, the historical subdivisions where they were established, maybe before the critical areas regulations took effect. And we've got a date for properties that weren't annexed. That was January 13, 1990. So what we would do is we would go back to our aerial sources and look for evidence of change over time. And if we can establish that that buffer was cleared or used as yard at that point, then we could probably establish that it was non-conforming.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? Mr. Zelensky?
Dave, can you tell us what kind of response you've been getting so far from your stakeholder outreach?
We're just getting started. We've circulated drafts to the port. We've circulated some information to representatives from property owners on Smith Island. Had a couple of meetings, and some of the issues that were raised there were the applicability of wetland compensation ratios on Smith Island. Right now, we've got a program called CWP that's part of the shoreline regulations, and that stands for the Snohomish Estuary Wetland Integration Plan. And that is basically an inventory and a methodology for evaluating wetlands and mitigation in the estuary. And it has a very elaborate formula and calculations for how you determine that. So the request was, can we try to keep some of those methodologies in place, because they provide a little bit, they provide certainty based upon, you know, prior experience? So that, we have kept CWP for, I believe it's properties that are in the urban mixed shoreline designation. Is that right? And so that was a concern. Another one was the ability to use reasonable use provisions in the shoreline area. And right now, we've got a specific prohibition on doing that. What we do instead is defer to the shoreline variance criteria. And those criteria basically have an allowance for reasonable use, so you just get there using a different process. You go through the DOE shoreline variance process rather than the city's reasonably use process, but according to Ecology, you can get to the same place, just using a little different process. So those were two of the main concerns that we had.
Any conversations with the Realtor market or the home builder market?
We really haven't. Again, this is something that we're considering to be, you know, really a minor update, a consistency update. And so when it comes to, you know, wetland and stream buffers and buildable versus unbuildable land, we don't expect there to be real significant change. So we haven't really done that level of outreach at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Yan? I'm sorry, the inventory of critical areas, are there, I guess I'm not, haven't seen a map or anything, where those areas would be. Are there many, I guess, homeowners, you know, that would be affected or near any of these critical areas? Have those been kind of contemplated when these areas were developed? So there's not many homeowners who might be surprised by even a minor change?
I don't think so. I mean, there's homeowners around Silver Lake, and a lot of that is within shoreline jurisdiction, but the effect on those properties would be negligible, just because they're established. As far as other property owners go, for example, in some of the ravines around Everett, there would really be no change, as I see it. There may be a little bit of additional flexibility, you know, insofar as, you know, putting minor structures and buffers, things like that, but other than that, not much of a change. It's really about usability of the code.
Any additional questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the planning commission on this topic this evening? Seeing none. I guess we're, thanks for the briefing there. So we, we're actually having a hearing on the 5th, is that correct? Or?
Did I get that right?
Okay.
Okay.
And then it'll go forward with the shoreline master program together for a final recommendation on the 19th. Okay. I guess we're on to the third item, which is the sign code briefing. Looks like you're on that one, too, Dave.
I am. So also in your packet is a markup, another markup, and I'm sure you had fun with that one. But we also provided a clean copy of the changes. So purpose here, again, is to update the regulations, not to necessarily overhaul them. There are a few changes in some of the standards, a few modifications, and I'll highlight some of those. Again, we need to streamline, simplify, consolidate, make the code easier to use. Back to our criteria that we consider when doing the streamlining updates. Certainly, we need to reduce duplication. There are incidences of the sign standards scattered throughout Title 19. The idea is to eliminate some of those and consolidate them, get them into the sign chapter. We'd like to improve the organization of the code to make it cleaner, simpler, easier to understand, better user interface, so make it easier to navigate your way through the code. And I think we've done that with sort of a reorganization of some of the standards in the code. We want to establish consistency. Right now, they're, again, because of the fact that many of the standards are scattered throughout the code, it's hard to keep them consistent. So putting them in one place makes it easier to make them consistent and then track them over time. Importantly, we want to make sure that staff easily can implement the code, and the better they can do that, the better they can serve the public. And then also make sure that we maintain quality of development. So this is kind of our evaluation matrix. Current focus, of course, is signs and critical areas. We've completed metro and then completed off-street parking standards, and certainly would welcome your input on how we're doing on signs and critical areas. Of course, we have had a important court case, Reed versus Gilbert, which is a Supreme Court case addressing free speech. And so we need to make sure that our code reflects the mandates coming out of that case, as well as other case law. And our legal department is helping us with that. We just received some comments on the draft from legal, and so we'll take those into We want to consolidate all the standards into chapter 36. So this is kind of a tool that we use for, you know, cataloging and tracking those various standards. This is only one page out of probably four or five. And so what we do is we provide code citations, you know, organized by subject, and then provide a recommendation in the middle column there for what we want to do with that standard. In a lot of cases, it's delete it or move it, then delete it. We'd like to put the sign standards into tables for ease of use. Right now, things are kind of laid out in narrative format, so it can be a little hard to find what standards apply, as well as reduce sign categories. So here's an example of a table that would be new. Steve mostly put this together. And so we have four site, sign categories in the table here. Currently, there are five, so we would reduce one. And the one we would delete is sign, the existing sign category B, which only applies currently in three zones. It applies to the MS, the WC, and the B2B zones. So the net activity that we get in areas designated sign category B is pretty minimal. So I don't think we'll miss it too much. Another change that's part of this table is here under sign category A, if you read across, under minimum setback from lot line abutting the street right-of-way, there is an indication for monument signs with a zero-foot setback and freestanding pole signs with a 25-foot setback. And that's a little bit different from the current standard. Current standard requires, I believe, a five-foot setback, and then it's stair-stepped. You go up two feet for each foot that you go back, and I think you've got to set back 10 feet to get up to 25 feet. And so under this standard, you would need to move a pole sign back 25 feet to reach 25-foot height. And so that's a change. And we've certainly expecting some input from some of the sign companies. We'll be meeting with them shortly. A few other changes in the table here, I won't spend too much time on them. So that's what we're consolidating into the table. So there's essentially two pages of narrative, which, you know, if you want to know what, okay, what's my allotment for wall signs in sign category C, you really got to dig around to find them. But if you go to the table here, you look at C, wherever on the left, and you go across to wall signs over on the right. So hopefully, that's going to make things a little bit simpler. I mentioned the standard for freestanding signs and setbacks for pole type or non-monument signs. So again, that is a change. To spend a little bit of time on that issue, a couple of pictures here, one from Broadway, another one from Everett Mallway, and these are pole-type signs, which are non-conforming even under the current standards. And so you would basically need to set these back 25 feet from the property line of the street in order to meet the current standards. And there's an additional requirement that the base of a sign would have to be half as wide as the sign itself. And that's a little bit of a change. That's a standard that applies currently in the E1 M U O area or E1 zone. And so we would then apply that. And so we would then apply that to freestanding signs throughout the city. So that's another change there. More examples from Broadway, non-conforming signs are, you know, with our provisions, are, it's tough to get rid of them. Typically, you need to take out a permit for another sign in order for the city to be able to acquire removal. And a lot of these properties just, they reface an existing sign, and so they can, they can keep it around. So as I mentioned, again, for, for some of the sign standards for sign category A, a monument sign would have maximum eight-foot height, could be zero-foot setback. Those are going to be reviewed by the traffic engineer case by case to ensure that there's no sight distance issues. And then non-monument-type freestanding signs would have to be set back 25 feet in order to reach the full 25-foot height. Change to window sign regulations, right now, they're considered wall signs, and so they, they fall into that allotment for wall signs under the draft, which would apply citywide, we just say 25% of the window area. So that'll, that'll, and that doesn't get credited or, or doesn't count against your Temporary signs, new section there. That's kind of where we really focused on some of the content neutrality issues from court cases, because that's where most of our non-commercial signage is. And the draft would place a restriction on temporary signage. We'd go with a maximum of six square feet. Currently, you could do temporary banners, I think, up to 32 square feet. Right, so that's, that's a bit more restrictive. And then the fluttering blade, we call them blade or sale signs, that you see, the taller one here in the, in the foreground, those would, those would be prohibited as temporary signs. And those are kind of a constant enforcement issue for us. They pop up everywhere, and, and it's hard to track them over time, especially if you have a time limit. So that particular type of sign, we've proposed to, to not allow. What we do allow are monument signs. Here's an example of the Everett School District Headquarters on Broadway and 41st. Basically, the same sign at two different locations on the property. And the one on the right is nice, because it provides nice sort of foundational plantings and out, or accent plantings. That's the type of thing we want to encourage in order for the signage to, you know, blend into the site. Another good example?
Can I stop you there, Dave?
Yeah, sure.
One quick, quick question. So reading through your table here, and depending on the zone or the category, it's a zero setback for those. But in other categories, it's, you know, it looks like, what, a six-foot sign or something? That would have to, it couldn't be in a location that's currently active, it would have to be six feet from the property line, is that correct?
Let's see if I can find the table. There we go. So for sign category A, monument sign would have a zero-foot setback. For sign category B, one foot for every foot of sign height. So, yeah, those, in other categories, there, there would be a setback.
So what category would that particular facility fall under?
I believe that's in either B1 or C2. Which one? Or, or, excuse me, BMU or C1.
That's it. Yeah, A, sign category A.
So it'd be sign category A. So that would be a zero-foot setback.
Can you, when you bring this back with whatever revisions you get from the, you have a sentence in here on that just above the table, it says, determine the property zoning from the city zoning map. That's fine. We can provide a link to that, I would suppose. But then it says, refer to Chapter 6 of this title, determine which sign category applies to that zone. I'm not quite sure what that means.
Right.
And I'm not trying to interrupt your presentation here, but since we're on that topic. Title 6 is what? And then, so there, there's something in there that would say what my category is?
Correct.
Based on the zone?
Yeah, it's a table in the zoning code called the Development Standards Table. And so it lists the zoning, the various zones in the city across the top, and then down the left are development standards. And the last one on the left is sign category. So then you just read across to determine the sign category for each zone. And that's what gets you to the sign chapter.
Can you provide those two pieces for us to review as part of this?
Sure.
Maybe just email it out to the group or what have you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'm just about done. There's another good example. This is Everett Community College sign. You can see they've used, made interesting use of materials, the shape of the sign, and the foundational plantings all seem to work pretty well. And that one probably has a zero setback. Another one that was done under the BMU standards, which would be similar under the proposed standards. That was for O'Reilly's, which I think is up at about 17th and Broadway. They have an allowance or an area here that they've set aside for plantings. However, they appear to be missing, so. So we have a meeting coming up with some of the sign companies. That'll be later this week. And we'll review the draft and get their comments and concerns. Then we'll do our super review on the ordinance change, and we expect that there will be some revisions to the draft, so we'll bring those back to you at the next briefing on, on the 19th of February. And then the public hearing is tentatively scheduled for March 19th. I think a decision is probably a month after that.
Whenever they're ready.
So the content neutral subject, it was decided that it would be a maximum of six square feet? Content neutral, is that how you're proposing that?
Content neutrality isn't really tied to the size or height.
Right.
It's tied more to how you classify various types of signs. So for example, kind of, I think the Reed case focused on special event signage for a church. And then that was appealed, and the Supreme Court determined that, hey, city, you can't treat churches differently from any other type of, you know, ideological-type message such as political signs. And so it required that, that sign codes essentially not make those distinctions. That you could maybe distinguish signs that are in the right-of-way versus signs that are on private property. But in terms of looking at, you know, churches or community facilities or nonprofits or some other sort of non-commercial entity, you can't really draw distinctions between those types. And so that's what we've attempted to do with our temporary sign standards, is not, is eliminate those distinctions. Right now, we have, you know, we have political signs, we have real estate signs, we have temporary special event signs. So, so we've eliminated some of those categories.
And was it the maximums of six square feet for a temporary sign? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, correct.
Whereas before, it was all over the board for size and?
Correct.
Type?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I, that's kind of what I was asking.
Sorry if that was a long-winded response.
Yeah, sorry.
Commissioner Yanis?
Thank you. I might have several questions. One, I was trying to find a definition of temp, the two, two things stand, the temporary sign and incidental sign. I didn't see a definition for either of those. Is that somewhere else in the code, or is that?
Yes, it is. And I apologize, I didn't provide those definitions in the packet, but those are in Chapter 4 of the zoning code.
Is there a reason they're not in right here, so you could just, I mean?
They're, they're not right here, unfortunately. I didn't bring a copy. But what I can do is I can, I've got a separate Word document with all the definitions for signage, and I can, as a follow-up, send that out to everybody.
And you said it's in a separate section?
In the zoning code, currently, there's a general section for definitions.
Okay.
And it basically includes all definitions for the zoning code and includes signage.
I thought, when I was looking at the section for temporary signs, it says, do these standards apply to signs, meaning the definition of temporary signs in this title? So it's somewhere in that title?
It's in the zoning code, Title 19.
Okay, that's.
Yeah.
Got it. And is that same with incidental sign?
Yes.
That's also defined?
All the terminology you see here is included in the definition, so I'll make sure that you get that.
Got it. And then I had a question about the exemptions from, from both, from the chapter as well as from the permit requirement. Looks like with the revisions, and I'm not sure if this is a change, but for example, it says exemptions, flags, a flag of a government or non-commercial institution such as a school, that would be exempt from the chapter. But would that, would it, for example, a flag flown on a, at a residence not be exempt? Because that being a?
I'm assuming it would be, yeah.
It would be exempt or would not?
Yes, it would be. Yes. So we, we would never have a permit requirement for somebody to fly a flag at their house.
Right. And I guess I'm just wondering, it, I guess that wasn't clear to me when I was reading that. Was that, I guess that was my concern. When I was reading it, it seemed to say that you're only exempt if it's a flag of a government or non-commercial institution. It, it kind of leaves as silent as to a flag, I guess, which would lead me to believe that flags somewhere else might not be exempt. I was just wondering about that language, why it didn't include, why it was restricted to government or not, or non-commercial institution, and didn't just say, you know, maybe a flag on a private residence as well.
That's something to look at. That's something we, we need to look at, so appreciate you bringing that to our attention. That does kind of go toward that content neutrality.
Right. And I know that's something sometimes people can get fired up about, maybe. Another question, I saw that the exceptions to this, to the permit requirement from the, a change was made that real estate signs is no longer included as an exception, political signs no longer included as an exception. Does that mean that then, that under the new revision, a political sign would require a permit?
No. It just means we don't regulate them as political signs anymore, and we don't regulate them as real estate signs anymore. We look at them as temporary signs.
Okay, so they would fall under that definition of, of temporary sign then?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Zlasky?
Just one question on the categories. Are the categories kind of an artificial construct, or are they, is, the only thing I could tell was maybe the size of the sign is the distinguishing characteristic of the categories. Is that correct?
Correct, yep. Size and height setbacks.
Okay.
Commissioner Finch?
As relates to sign enforcement, who bears the cost of removal and disposal?
If, if it's the city removing illegal temporary signs, for example, my assumption is that that would be borne by the city, in that we would keep them for a while and notify property owners, and they can come pick them up if they want. So that, that's something that our code enforcement staff would, would address. And then they would just basically need to provide a place to store them. I don't think we would, we would necessarily, you know, take someone to an enforcement hearing and find them for temporary signage. I may be, you know, speaking out of turn here, but there's something, you know, if they're determined to be illegal, then, and if they're on the right-of-way particularly, they could be removed by the code enforcement official.
But for other sign enforcement, so if somebody just erects a sign that should have had a permit, it's on their property, private property, doesn't meet the, the sign requirements, any enforcement would be the cost of, that would be borne by the property owner.
Yeah, understood. It strikes me that as relates to temporary signage, those blade signs you're talking about, removal and disposal by the city at the city's cost doesn't strike me as much of a deterrent.
And, and with those, typically, you know, it's really probably the size of sign that the code enforcement officer can fit in the trunk of his car, that he, he or she might remove from public right-of-way. Typically, the, those flag or teardrop, or there's so many different names that the people who sell those signs have for them, I don't know that we've got a good definite or term for them yet. But most of the time, those are placed on private property, and typically, we enforce that with a letter to the property owner or business owner saying that you have so many days to comply, remove it. Those are currently not allowed under our code. We just don't have a good term for them. So that's one of the changes that we're making here, is to add a term for them. Not sure that blade sign is the, the one that we'll use. There's another, I guess, a couple, a couple of different types of signs that have that terminology as common usage. And so we'll, we'll figure out the right term for it.
Commissioner Lott?
Yeah. So I'm thinking about traffic review as far as clear zone and safety for vehicles leaving the roadway. Is that also part of the review?
It is. There's a specific requirement that for any monument-type sign, street, or freestanding sign, the traffic engineer or city engineer has to take a look at that and make sure there won't be a sight distance issue.
Yeah. Yeah. They're definitely an obstruction that could be dangerous. Yeah. Okay.
And it may be that, after meeting with some of the sign companies, that they actually don't mind having a required setback there. So, so it might be that we, we come back and have a minimum setback for them, but we'll still, still need to have some more discussion.
I'm just curious about the, you talked about that with the freestanding signs, a new standard being 25-foot setback. At least in some of those pictures, it looked like the buildings themselves are not set back 25 feet. Where did that 25-foot, is that based on some standard, or where'd that come from?
Well, I, I think one of the sign codes that we looked at was the city of Linwood. And so for their mixed-use zone along Highway 99, they require a 25-foot setback, but they have a more restrictive height, I think it's 15 feet. I may have a section of that code here. Yeah, Linwood. So, yeah, they allow for, let's see, maximum height of 15 feet, minimum sign setback 25 feet, area 75 square feet, that's similar to Everett. So that was kind of one of the things that we looked at in coming up with the standard, what are the jurisdictions doing?
And if I may, you know, since we first adopted the sign code with the 1990 sign code, we've created a number of new zones since that time, and two of our busiest commercial corridors, Broadway and Evergreen Way. And in each of those zones, we've come up with different sign standards than would apply in the zones that had preceded them, but that still exist in other parts of the community like Everett Mallway or 19th Avenue Southeast. And so part of our challenge here is trying to improve the aesthetic standards that are more in line with the Evergreen Way or Broadway zoning, and to condense those different sign categories into, you know, a single category and a single standard. And so that's one of the reasons that we're looking at some other examples like this. And so the Evergreen Way zoning and the Broadway zoning have a little bit more setback, a little bit lower height allowance. Whereas if you had the same business on Everett Mallway, which doesn't look a whole lot different than Evergreen Way, you've got different sign standards. And so we're trying to simplify that by, you know, putting them all into one category instead of at least two or three.
I noticed that under your temporary sign category, it says that seven days is the maximum that the sign can be up. But I didn't notice in our marked-up copy whether that was a new addition or if that was part of the old sign regulation.
I believe that's a new addition, and that's intended to apply to events. So in other words, a sale or, you know, an election, something like that, that it needs to be removed within seven days of the conclusion of that. Now, for signs that don't advertise an event, that was one of the questions our legal department asked, so we're going to be taking a look at that.
So I have one quick question. Are you kind of creating an enforcement nightmare with the 25% in the window? I'm thinking of Evergreen Way. I can't tell you how many commercial businesses, like, they have huge windows, and they're all signage. So.
Do we already have window sign standards?
Yeah, we do. I think window sign standards currently are a function of wall signage. So if you're allowed, you know, X number of square feet for the total facade, you can include a portion of that in your window. But I don't think there's a maximum coverage of the window that's allowed or, or. Uh, but I don't think there's a maximum coverage of the window that's allowed, uh, or, or, uh, required by the current standards. The idea is to have some transparency.
Right.
Um, and improve the.
No, and I completely, I think it's, I'm just, I'm thinking of all the commercial businesses that are going to be like, well, we've been doing this for decades. You know, putting, I mean, they switch out their posters all the time and, you know.
Right, and you saw the example from.
Exactly. I was like, that's gonna, I mean, I'm not, I understand where it's going and it makes sense, but I just think it's going to be hard, um, given a lot of the established businesses, particularly on some of the major corridors that are more kind of geared towards that automobile, you know, capturing, you know. That, that's, that's all I was thinking about.
Well, I mean, there, there is a mechanism to look at that. Uh, when somebody comes in for a permit for a wall sign, they need to show us all their existing signage. Uh, and so if, for example, you know, a window is entirely covered, uh, then we could ask them to bring it into conformance with the code at that time.
My assumption is, is like most jurisdictions, that you don't have a lot of staff to do sign enforcement. It's generally complaint-based and/or as new permits come in, would that be a correct assessment?
Yes, that's correct, although occasionally, and it's been years since we've, uh, done the sign sweeps where we send staff out and say, you take this section of Broadway and go for a couple of miles. And we generate all kinds of, uh, fan mail after, after that exercise. But, uh, yeah, it is primarily complaint-driven. And frankly, the, the, the signs that, uh, we get the most complaints about are not the ones in the windows. Uh, it's usually the ones along the street furniture that, uh, the cigarette and beer signs that the, uh, beer and cigarette companies give to the mom and pop stores that, you know, exceed all of our standards and temporary signs, commercial signs like that. So, um, yeah, we, that, that is one of the shortcomings that we have. We just don't have the, the staff either in planning or in the code enforcement, uh, to do a proactive, uh, consistent level of sign code enforcement.
Yeah, I think one of the main ones, the ones you're proposing to prohibit are those flags or whatever you want to call them that are adjacent to the right of way and tend to, you know, when it gets windy out there blowing into the sidewalk and things like that, people are getting whipped with them and, you know. So I think that's a positive change, even though I don't think the sign industry's going to like it, but, uh.
Well, they're already permitted, it's just we don't have a, a good term for them. They, they don't meet several of our standards, uh, for signs that are permitted, and so therefore they're not permitted.
And we, we've also tried to more clearly define temporary signs as made of, you know, temporary materials that'll degrade over time. And so once it's visibly degraded or you can't read it anymore, then, then code enforcement, that's all they would need, uh, to go out and, and have, and enforce upon it. Um, so there's more of a performance standard for those signs too.
On the window, is a, is a wrap the same as a sign? I mean, kind of going where Kath and that, when a lot of these stores have got, you know, a, a, a wrap that you can see through it, um, that'd still be considered a sign?
That probably would not meet, probably would, would not meet the definition of sign, uh, if it's just somewhat transparent.
Like Verizon and some of those, uh, stores have got, you know, I, I call it a wrap, but it's, it's a vinyl coating. It's got holes in it and kind of like they put on a bus or whatever. And, uh, would those be considered a sign?
Um, not sure. I'm, uh, understanding what, what you're talking about. I think we'd have to take a look at that, but, uh, if it met the definition of sign, and that's one of the things that we'll provide to you is the whole definition, it would have to be something that, it may not even be words. It may be some kind of graphic picture that is intended to attract attention to a.
Yes.
Business, and that would meet the definition of sign.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I think, I know what you mean.
I know what he's talking about.
Where if you're sitting inside the bus, you can see out, but from the outside, when you look at it, it's a picture across the window. So it's, it's kind of clear and kind of translucent, but it's a sign, is what I think.
On page thirteen, where it talks about the window sign standards, it does, it does talk about the materiality of the window signs. It says etched glass, gold leaf, painted or vinyl, so probably it would fall into the vinyl category, but.
Okay, thank you.
That's not my job.
Thank you.
Any additional questions this time? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the planning commission on this topic this evening? See none? Thanks, Dave. Next item on the agenda is planning commission bylaws. Um, I think Kathy provided you with what, uh, Commissioner Zelinski, and then I made a very small amendment to the sentence before that dealt with, uh, alternate, um, voting. So if you want to take a quick review of that and there's any comments or discussion. Uh, in order to change the bylaws, they need to have five, uh, regular members, uh, voting on that particular item to, to pass it according to the existing bylaws, just as an FYI.
Commissioners Lasky?
Um, for the benefit of Commissioner Finch, who was absent during some of these discussions. This had, this amendment has to do with the situation that occurs occasionally where there is one regular member absent, but both alternates are present. So who votes? So that's, that was the situation we were trying to address with this change.
And the old practice was, there's, there's a, there's an alternate one and an alternate two. It was if alternate one, the, the first meeting of the month was alternate one would be the voting person. Second meeting of the month, it would be the alternate two person that would be voting and it would be based on the chairperson to, you know, basically announce that, I guess, as part of the meeting. So, and this amendment would just take it to, so it's not a, a current thing.
To avoid the possibility that someone is inadvertently being essentially left out of being able to vote.
I like it. I, I think it addresses it. Do you want to entertain a move to adopt?
I'll move adoption.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yeah.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes. Woo, that one's done well.
That's only one.
Yeah. Uh, other than any other business that, um, staff might have, we do have the, uh, voting of chairperson, very, vice-chairperson. Um, I had asked, uh, Commissioner Beck if she was interested in chairing the planning commission. I'd like to step down from that capacity this year. And, uh, so unless, uh, anyone has any, uh, uh, other folks they'd like to, uh, recommend, I, I would, uh, make a motion to, uh, have Commissioner Beck be the chairperson in two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Pass.
Chair Holland?
Yes.
So that brings us to vice-chairperson. Which I'm going to be stepping down from that capacity. Uh, and the reason is, it's not that I don't mind, uh, chairing the, the meetings, is I, just looking at my calendar this year, there's going to be several meetings that I might have to miss. And so I don't want to, uh, put the commission in a position where we don't have a chairperson or vice-chairperson, uh, represented. So, um, anyways. So any other nominations would be greatly appreciated.
I'd like to, is it a motion or?
Yeah.
But Commissioner Labra. Anybody want to second me?
I'd second.
I, I can do it. Future's female.
Any, any discussion, any discussion other than Commissioner Labra's? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yeah.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Epstein.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes.
Any other business from the commissioners or staff this evening?
Uh, just one item, and that is, uh, I had Kathy send out an email about, uh, February twenty-sixth and March twenty-sixth as a special meeting. We've got some pretty full agendas in February and March, uh, already. And, uh, last week we re, we received the, uh, application to amend the development agreement for the landfill site on the riverfront redevelopment. And so we have, uh, tentatively, uh, picked dates of February twenty-sixth and March twenty-sixth. Uh, February twenty-sixth for a workshop and March twenty-sixth possibly for a decision on, uh, on, on the amendment to the master plan. And I think we've heard back from five commissioners that, uh, they would be available. So, uh, you don't have to tell us tonight, but if you can check your calendars and get back to Kathy, uh, your availability, uh, we need to, uh, before we too much longer will want to advertise those, get those on our website, uh, those dates. And so, uh, that would be the fourth Tuesday of each of those months.
And personally, I might not be available since that's the planning commission for Marysville. So if we have agenda items, I wouldn't be able to attend, but I still may be able to attend based on whether or not we have any agenda items for those particular dates. So I'm still the potential. So, yeah, if we have, uh, more folks, that, that would even be better, so.
And I would like to also, I've, um, mentioned in that email that it is a quasi-judicial, uh, matter. And so if you have any questions about what that means beyond what, uh, I've stated in that email, then feel free to give me a call or you can talk with the legal department if you prefer. But, uh, uh, the idea is that, uh, if you have, uh, people coming to talk to you about the merits of the, uh, uh, proposal outside of the public hearing process, you need to tell them that you're not able to talk to them outside of the public process. Uh, if you have questions about, uh, process, however, you know, you can talk to staff about that. We just can't get, uh, in a separate conversation with you about the merits of, uh, of that. But we can certainly, uh, talk about process.
Any, Alan, any general highlights on the revisions that?
Yes, um, the current plan for the landfill site, uh, was basically a, uh, large retail development with, uh, some nice open space areas and, uh, nice public, uh, amenities along a meandering street through the center of the, the landfill site. Uh, that plan was adopted in two thousand eight or nine. And of course, uh, right after that, uh, we had the major recession. And since that time, we've had tremendous changes in the way that retail, uh, stores are functioning or not functioning. And so the, um, uh, property owner has changed, uh, the, uh, and they proposed a development that is mostly residential, but it's mixed-use where you would have ground floor retail with five stories of, uh, housing above all of the ground floor retail. Uh, there's a proposed, uh, theater and a proposed small grocery store, perhaps, uh, a hotel, perhaps some office space. And so that's, that's basically the proposal. Uh, we'll be, uh, getting the plans up on the website before too long. Uh, but, uh, it's, uh, enough of a change that does require planning commission and the city council to amend the current development agreement.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing from staff.
Anything else from the commissioners? Welcome again, Commissioner Finch.
Thank you.
And I guess we're adjourned for the evening. Thanks.